Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. We call this meeting to order. We welcome all of you to this June 3rd, 2019 meeting. We ask that you silence your phones if you have your phones on. And with that, we'll start with our invocation. Pastor Alexander, you here? There he is, Pastor Alexander. If you would, please stand.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Will you please pray with me? Father, we thank you for this opportunity to convene on this evening. We ask you for your presence to rest within this chamber. God let everything to be done be done in decency and in order for the collective good of our local community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, sir.
If you would, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and every soul.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next, we have one call.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Foster.
President.
Mayor Ham.
We're all here. Next, we have approval of the minutes of the work session, the regular session, April 15th, 2019. Is there any discussion? All five raise your right hand. Pose likewise. Minutes are approved. Next, we have presentations. Mayor's Youth Council Senior Presentations. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Allen, City Council, City Manager. We're going to move as swiftly as possible. We've had 22 graduating seniors this year in the Youth Council. We have a few of them here tonight. About half of them are here tonight. Just want to share real briefly that they have been a very impressive group of young people. We were fortunate enough to have a diverse group this year. We've had representation from each of the local high schools, with the exception of Spring Creek High School. We've been very active in the community. I think the members would agree that our most rewarding service has been partnering with the local Salvation Army to provide Hurricane Florence relief. I'd like to thank all the parents for your support. There are any parents that are here tonight, when I call your child's name up, if you would stand. Mayor Allen, if you would come down. First, I'd like to call Ms. Abigail Bogus. And the parents that are here, if you would stand when I call your child's name. Abby will be graduating next week from Charles B. A. Cott High School. She's been a member of Youth Council for two years. She's a trombone player in Charles B. A. Cott Concert Band and Jazz Band. She's also a member of the Starlight Dance Band. Abby, this fall, will be attending University of Mount Olive to study music, education, and performance. Congratulations, Abby. Next up, Mr. Isaiah Williams. Isaiah will be graduating next week from Southern Wayne High School. He's been a member of the Youth Council for one year. He's had perfect attendance at all of the meetings. He recently won the Eagle Scout Honor and the Arrow of Light Award. I've learned is the highest honor. He will be attending North Carolina A&amp;T State University to study biology. And Isaiah's mother is an employee of the city of Goldsboro. Mr. Jacob Henson will be graduating next week from Rosewood High School. Has a GPA of 4.3. Jacob is number one in his graduating class. He's been at the Youth Council for one year. He's very active in agriculture. He's a member of Future Farmers of America and was recently awarded a scholarship from the Wayne County Livestock Association. Jacob is a piano player and a musician for his church, which is Pink Knee Missionary Baptist Church. Jacob will be attending NC State this fall to major in poultry science. Ms. Natalie Ardello. Natalie graduated last week from Wayne Early Middle College High School with a GPA of 3.9. She's been the Youth Council for two years. She was inducted into the Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. She plans to join the U.S. Navy and study biology. Congratulations. Ms. Casey Jones graduated last week from Wayne Early Middle College High School. She served on the Youth Council for two years. She was our chair for this year. She's had perfect attendance at all of the meetings. Casey has served as defense attorney with Wayne County Team Court. She's also served as lieutenant governor for the Carolina's District Key Club this year. Casey will be attending NC State University this fall to study polymer and color chemistry. Mr. Najah Pace graduated last week from Wayne School of Engineer with a 4.0 GPA. He worked on the Youth Council for three years. He's been a member of the Executive Board for the Goldsboro Youth Council, as well as the State Youth Council Office in Raleigh. He was an active track team member, inducted to the Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society and National Society of High School Scholars. Najah will be attending UNC Greensboro this fall to study economics, and he will also begin a pre-med track. Isaiah's dad has worked for 13 years in public utilities. Ms. Callie Casulis will be graduating next week from Charles B. A. Cott High School. She has a GPA of 4.0. She's been a member of the Youth Council for three years. She's also very active in agriculture. Is a member of Future Farmers of America and was awarded a scholarship with Jacob from the Wayne County Livestock Association. For the past two years, Callie has traveled with her church to Haiti to serve in mission. She will be attending University of Mount Olive this fall to study veterinarian, bioscience, and agricultural business. Congratulations, Callie. Lastly, we have Mr. Anaya Sykes. She graduated last week from Wayne Early Middle College High School with a GPA of 4.3. Anaya has served on the Youth Council for three years with perfect attendance at every meeting. She's a member of the Wayne County Humane Society. And at school, she served on the Key Club, Art Club, and was president of the History Club. She currently serves as a volunteer with the Wayne County Animal Shelter and Eastern Wayne Elementary School. Anaya will be attending Wayne Community College this fall to finish an Associate's in Arts Degree. Congratulations, Anaya. Mayor Allen.
Mr. Mayor, they're a lot smarter than the rest of them.
We got it under?
Ready?
No smile?
Smile.
Are there any parents who want to get a picture of your kids? If you do, this is your opportunity to feel free. So, anything, one thing I do want to say is I just want to congratulate each and every one of you. You worked very hard to get where you are. Your life is just starting. We want to keep following you. We want you to come back to our afternoon. One or two of you will, come on, we want. But we have a couple of you that come back soon, come back with us. But what I want to say to you young kids sitting on the front row right there is you need to look at these kids. Because what I can tell you that I know without a doubt that nobody in here will argue with is education is the best equalizer there is. And when you get out of high school, you either need to go to higher education, or you need to be trained for some type of job. And these kids are good examples of what's going to work at schools, doing what's supposed to school. Look at where they're all going. They're all going to higher education, and they're going to be very, very successful. And we're very proud of each and every one of them. And we want to see you kids up here as mayor of Youth Council in a few years, okay? All right. And the Chacoa and the Community Reentry Court for all they do, the way Youth Council puts a lot of work into it, and these kids and these parents, I mean, parents of everything. I don't think I need to say that, but we need to thank everybody. All right, next, we go get here from Pastor Alexander again on the MPI project. Pastor? I know you're passionate about this one.
Yes, sir, very much so. Good evening again, Mayor, City Manager, members of the council. If I could, I would like to ask Chief Mike West to join me at the podium, as well as JDM Cynthia Sutton for NCDPS District 8. MPI has been an organization that's been around here since 2016. Our primary focus is assisting those that have been either released back to this area from a period of incarceration, or currently serving on probation and parole within this area. Since our origination and inception in this area in 2016, we have been quite successful, even to the point that we are now recognized at the state level with a Wayne County Reentry Council. If I could, Captain Chiro, if you'll please stand. Chief Williams, if you'll please stand. They serve now as our co-chairs for the Wayne County Reentry Council. Thank you. We've also got the eyes of several senators with the work that is being done here, namely Senator Tillis, Senator Davis, as well as, we'll be speaking with Senator Bell. That's on the clock here, it's coming soon. So, we have those eyes as well. We have been quite successful in our efforts here. We can go back to the time period of April from 2017 to April in 2018, and we were successful with assisting 33 individuals from returning to a period of incarceration. So, at a rate of roughly $36,000, $37,000 a year to incarcerate one person in the state of North Carolina, that was roughly a savings of $1.3 million. Okay, so our work is serious here. We've developed some very great working relationships, having MOAs in place with the Community College. We work closely with Salvation Army, various employers within the area, even to the point now, we have employers that are waiting to see when our graduates will come out of the program, because they're interested in hiring. And that's going as far as House of Rayford, Sanderson Farms, Franklin Bakery has become one of our prominent employers as of date. So, they are actually in line waiting for our students to come out of this program. In this program, we're dealing with various things, from education, to job training, to the ability to be able to handle finances. We incorporate the assistance as well of Ms. Susie Akry in the Bank on Wayne Program. So, this is not just a solo type of thing, or a mission in a silo. We are working together as a collective group here to make some stuff happen within Wayne County. I've asked Chief West to step up here, and JDM Sutton to give you also a direct report as far as the impact that it's making within their areas. We also partnered with Sheriff Pierce. He was unable to make it tonight, but he did send his support as well. So, at this time, if I may, Chief West?
Mayor and council, I was approached a couple of years ago by Pastor Alexander asking me for a letter of support of MPI. At the time, I didn't know very much about MPI, or the services they provide for the community. I did some research, and I learned some of what they provide is reentry support, housing support, job search, interview, training, and self-sufficiency development. These are not services that typically come to law enforcement officers' minds, you know, kind of at the forefront, or what we should be supporting. And the more I thought about it, the more it made sense. MPI is exactly what the police department needs and other community partners need to support law enforcement. Law enforcement cannot arrest our way out of the problems that we're facing in our community. That's impossible. Recidivism rates across the country are high, and that means the cost for society, more dangerous work for law enforcement officers, and more crime. According to the Bureau of Justice Statistics Studies, which tracks over 404,000 prisoners in 30 states after their release from prison, the research found that within three years of release, about 2/3, or 67% of released prisoners were rearrested. Within five years of release, about 3/4, or 76% of released prisoners were rearrested. In 2018, just here in the community, over $218,000 in property had been stolen, and lives had been lost in Goldsboro because of crime. Most of these crimes were not committed by first-time offenders. Crime in Goldsboro has declined over the past years, and I believe that one of the reasons for reduction is the Goldsboro Partners Against Crime call-ins that Pastor A. and MPI is a part of, is a critical part of. These call-ins are where a group of individuals are called in and given the opportunity to listen of what will happen if they reoffend and are caught. Pastor Alexander attends these calls-in, and at the end provides these individuals with an option. An option to these individuals to take a different path in life. These individuals are not given a get-out-of-jail-free card. What they're given is a stay-out-of-jail option. According to MPI statistical data, as Pastor A. was saying, from June 2017 to June of 2018, 106 people were contacted by MPI. 17 are currently employed, and this was at that time, 5 have adequate housing, 7 have completed career readiness certification assessments, and 4, at that time, were enrolled in Wayne Community College. And again, that's 33 individuals that were currently not incarcerated, saving the taxpayers of over $1 million. Again, I want to thank Pastor A. for bringing this, coming to me and asking me for support. Again, it wasn't something I was fully familiar with to begin with, but since I've been working in, he is critical in helping us reduce crime in the community. And again, it's not so much about somebody's past. Everybody makes mistakes. We've got to be able to provide them an opportunity to make a difference and take a different path, and I feel as for his efforts and what he's doing. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Chief.
Very welcome.
Mr.?
Good afternoon, Mayor Allen and other council members. I represent the Probation and Parole Office. We call our title is Department of Public Safety, but we are most known as Probation and Parole. We do work closely with the same clientele that Pastor A. is currently working with. I can remember 29 years ago, when I was sworn in by a Superior Court Judge, and I'll never forget him telling me, you know, "You're fortunate. You've had an opportunity that most individuals don't have, and you're going to see these individuals on a daily basis." And that has been so true, and it has stuck in my mind for 29 years. And now, we're at a place now where there are some opportunities for individuals, as opposed to several years ago, there were no opportunities for individuals coming out of prison, very limited opportunities for offenders that are on probation. And that is exactly what Pastor A. and his MPI is trying to do, is create some more opportunities for individuals. Again, they don't have the same opportunities that we have. They didn't have, they didn't come from two-parent homes. They didn't have the educational opportunities that we've had, the work opportunities that we've had. So, if we can support MPI and make these individuals better citizens and more productive citizens, I think it's going to benefit all of us, because our next-door neighbors, we may not know it, but they've been involved in the system in some way. And we all have family members that have been involved in the system. So, I really feel that everybody deserves that opportunity, and if this program is going to give them that opportunity, I think we should embrace it and support it, because I don't think it can do anything to hurt us. I think it all, all it can do is help us, and these individuals need our support. We're going to be here. Probation is not going anywhere. Prisons are not going anywhere. But we've got to do something to help ease the pain of the prison and help these individuals come back into these communities where they're our next-door neighbors, our family, friends, whatever they are to us, and help them be more productive. And I think Pastor Alexander has that program in place, and we won't know unless we give him that opportunity to show what he's got in place and how well it can benefit not only the offenders that we supervise, but the community that we live in. So, we just ask your support. We continue to support Pastor A., and I think we can only go further if we're given that opportunity through the MPI.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for what you do. Pastor Alexander, I know your heart's in it, and I know you've done the work, there's no doubt about it. Tell everybody how to get up, like your new office. Tell them about where your new office is and what goes on, and just share your story a little bit.
Yes, sir. We're located now at 620 North Madison Avenue. I'm not originally from this area. I'm told it was called Billy's Back Street back in the day. We've been in there since the month of April, official ribbon cutting in conjunction with the chamber. We are moving right along. Right now, we have received notification from DPS that within the course of this next year, we're looking at roughly 300 people being released from incarceration coming back to this area. Okay, so what does that mean? If we don't continue this effort to provide education, to provide job training, to assist with housing when they come out, something as simple as getting an ID card, okay? These are things we take for granted. If we're not willing to make that investment, then we're literally saying, "Well, I'm going to leave my back door open, I'm going to leave my car unlocked, and you have at it." See, not everybody who comes out is looking to go back to the life they left. But when you don't have options, then you have to do what you have to do. So, we welcome the participation of the community. We ask the council to consider if the budget is closed for this year, next year, adding us as a line item in support of our efforts. We would also ask you to consider if there is some way in this year that some assistance can be given, we would greatly appreciate it as we move forward. We also, right now, have an RFP on the table now with DPS at the state level, and it's looking very good that that will be some more funding coming back to this area. What we're doing is so much believable, and the evidence is seen that we have Judge Erica James, Judge Curtis Stackhouse, and Judge Will Bland that are on board. So, in their courtrooms, if they have someone that they feel is worthy or could stand another chance and an opportunity, they are directing them to come through this program. And we have been successful as we have moved forward.
Thank you. Good job.
I don't know if we can, but I would like to make a motion. I don't know if our budget hasn't been closed yet, but I would like to make a motion if we could, in some shape, form, or fashion, add MPI to our budget this year, in any shape, form, or fashion.
Well, you can make a motion. We're having a budget meeting on Thursday, and so that will be the time for us to discuss it.
All right, that'd be great.
Okay, so next, we have item D. This should be a happy item. National Donut Day Proclamation. I never knew there was such thing. I'm pretty impressed. All right, National Donut Day Proclamation. Whereas, beginning in 1917, a plot of 250 Salvation Army volunteers provided assistance during World War I to American soldiers in battle on the front lines in France. Two female Salvation Army, Ensign Margaret Sheldon and Adjutant Helen Purvis, had an idea to comfort our soldiers with good home cooking, using their limited ingredients to fry up and helms delicious donuts for the boys. Nicknamed Donut Lassies and Donut Girls, these women served countless treats to grateful soldiers traversing through the trenches to bring the men donuts and coffee. They also made history by introducing this tasty new treat to the United States when the donut boys returned from war. The Salvation Army celebrated their first National Donut Day in 1938 in the city of Chicago, as they waited to honor Salvation Army Donut Lassies from World War I. They began the holiday as a way to raise funds and bring awareness to the army's social service programs during the Great Depression. The donut has become synonymous with the Salvation Army's social service and continues to be a comfort food served by the Salvation Army to those in need during times of disaster. The celebration of this holiday still continues to be celebrated 78 years later to help raise awareness for the Salvation Army and to honor the service of our valued veterans and volunteers. Therefore, I check out on the city of Goldsboro to hereby proclaim Friday, June 7th, 2019, this National Donut Day in the city of Goldsboro, and encourage our citizens to enjoy a Friday treat and think of those doing the most good for those in the most need each day. This read's pretty good, and I know this is a folks from Salvation Army here, and they're always doing really good work in our community.
That's right, that's right. Thank you, everyone, for allowing us to be on your agenda tonight. National Donut Day is a big event with the Salvation Army. We partner with Krispy Kreme, and everyone gets a free donut on that day. Y'all like free donuts, right?
Yeah.
Yes. So, come stop by. We're going to, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM, we're going to have breakfast with Wayne there. So, we're really excited about that. And then the rest of the day, we'll just be hanging out and just encouraging people and letting them know the history of the Salvation Army. It's a really neat history, how they made the donuts. They actually made them in soldiers' helmets, and you think about how sweaty and yucky that was, but a lot of times, that was the only meal that soldier would have for up to 14 hours. The donut lassies, as he also mentioned, are, they're very well-known for the letters they wrote back to the soldier's family. Sometimes that would be the last they heard from their family member that was serving. So, it's a great day.
Well, I just want to take a minute to say, these folks are doing, these folks are bored, they're employed, and they're doing great work, and I see it every day. They're our guest, these folks, when we need some police department, they're just there. Along with us, the Salvation Army is a huge, huge deal, and we really appreciate what you're doing, and what you're doing. I know your heart's in it, and your work is in it, so we appreciate it. And you got to come on this side. All right, this next one is pretty important stuff, too. And this is the Summer Learning Week Proclamation. Whereas, National Summer Learning Week is a week to celebrate the importance of keeping children learning safe and healthy all summer long, and ready to succeed in the school year. Children can lose what they can learn over the summer, known as summer slide. The summer slide is a phenomenon that affects children who stop reading over the summer. Most students lose two months of math skills every summer, and children from low-income families typically lose another two or three months in reading. Summer learning loss during elementary school accounts for 2/3 of the achievement gap in reading between children from low-income families and their peers from middle-income families by ninth grade. Parents can help prevent the summer slide, summer learning loss, by encouraging their children to read, and by reading with their children over this break, as this will help students be ready to learn what's next in school. Public agencies, community, and faith-based organizations, schools, libraries, museums, recreation centers, and camps play an important and trusted role in the well-being of children through summer programming. Summer learning is a vital of our collective effort to ensure all students are ready for school and reading on a great level by the end of the third grade for academic and lifelong success. Therefore, I check out, Mayor Goldsboro, North Carolina, to hereby claim July 8th through 13th, 2019, Summer Learning Week in Goldsboro, North Carolina. Enthusiastically endorse United Way of Wayne County's Read Summer Learning Day, and recommit our city to engage in programs and activities to make children go for the best readers of North Carolina. And I saw some folks in the audience that I am sure are here to talk about this, so y'all come on up.
Would you like to speak today? All right, you can tell a few.
Hello. I'm Anna Snyder. I'm the head of Children's Services at the Wayne County Public Library. So, the library places a big emphasis on early literacy and helping families all during the year, but especially during the summer. A lot of our community partners, a lot of y'all are here today. We're having a big kickoff event for summer learning this Saturday at the Wayne County Public Library on App Street from 1:00 to 3:00. We want all families to know that reading and learning during the summer is really, really important. School is out, y'all work really hard all year, but we want you to keep learning during the summer. And so, the library and a lot of our community partners, lots of organizations around the county have opportunities for their students to keep learning. And it's fun, you know, you're having a break, but you don't have to stop learning during the summer. So, yes, we are excited about that.
Well, we do, and I think we think a lot, we thank the library, but there are a lot of community partners. I see the Boys Clubs right here that continue the summer reading. There's all kinds of places you can get summer reading, so we encourage all our kids to find somewhere, and we encourage all our parents to make our kids take a little bit of time off of Fortnite and do a little bit of reading. So, we get that.
All right, next on our agenda is the public hearing for the 2019-2020 Annual Operating Budget. Catherine, you go present that?
Good evening, Mayor, council, and citizens. As required by Budgetal Statute 15912, we have properly advertised on Tuesday, May 28th, in the Goldsboro News/Argus, the presentation of the budget. On the same day, we published a copy of the recommended budget online, and we have provided paper copies to the board. There is also a paper copy of the budget on file with City Clerk, and also at the public library for the public to view. I just want to give you a quick, brief overview for you and for the public. The total proposed budget for the FY 1920 budget is $63.4 million. The total FY 1819 adopted budget was $61.8 million. That is an increase of $1.6 million, or 2.61%. This was an octennial property tax revaluation year, which was effective January 1, 2019. Within the budget proposed to you tonight, we are proposing no change in the property tax rate. It will be, remain as 65 cents per $100 valuation. There is no change in the municipal service district, the special district for downtown. It will remain at 23.5 cents per $100 valuation in the proposed budget. There are no increases in solid waste fees, water, or sewer rates, with the exception of a 10% increase in wholesale water sales. This is not residential, commercial, or industrial customers. This is wholesale water sales only, where we resell to another provider. We are proposing six full-time employees to be added. We are currently at 470 FTE. We are currently at four hundred and seventy FTEs. Salary and benefits, there is a one percent cost of living raise proposed, effective July one, a merit effective January one, two thousand and twenty, and capital outlay of two point five million dollars proposed. I want to make one correction to the manager's message, and I apologize. In the agency amounts, we had rebuilding broken places as zero in the message, but they have been allocated five thousand dollars, which is the same as FY nineteen, which was the instruction that I was given. And Wayne's Borough Park was noted as having twenty-five thousand in the message, but they were allocated twenty thousand, which is the same as FY nineteen. So, again, I apologize for that error. It was a typo. And the only other item that I do not have within the budget is the bus shelter costs that the board just approved recently to come out of the general fund. It's around twenty-five thousand, and that, of course, we did not have time to get it worked into the budget. So, you know, I'll let the mayor start the public hearing and welcome public comment.
I also noticed that initially, the rail trails, I didn't see any allocations for that on North End, that we talked about that at the retreat.
Okay. I apologize, Ms. Williams, I'm not familiar with that. Do we have an amount for that, sir?
That amount, we didn't, we didn't discuss. I was waiting for Autimrec to give me a number on that work. And also, there was a block party that was requested as well. That was an amount of five thousand dollars for District One.
Yes, sir.
And that wasn't there.
It was, sir. We've actually got all the districts included in there with five.
But that was separate, that was separate from allocating five thousand for each member to use in their district.
Okay.
So, there's three things that are requested and told.
Okay, I'm sorry, I did not take that correctly, and I apologize for that. I was explained, I thought it was just one five thousand per district, so I apologize for that.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing to discuss our two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget. We see our first speaker. All right, I'm coming, so let me get her.
May we be your first speaker?
Well, you're already up, so I don't know why you can't be.
Fine. I need to get home.
Pardon?
I need to get home and to school, right?
Good evening.
Good evening. Come on this side, you are. Come over here. Speak loud and clear for me.
How you doing, ma'am?
Hello? How you all doing today?
Good.
Good, good, good. Got stair steps here.
Yeah, I know. Say it one more time.
I believe in God and I like to worship, but go to my own faith and my own religion.
And I'm American, and I believe in American, American way of life and the Constitution and Bill of Rights.
I believe in fair play, honesty, and sportsmanship.
I believe in my Boys and Girls Club, which stands for these things.
All right. Good evening.
Hi, guys, doing tonight?
Good evening, how are you?
Oh, my name is Xavier. I'm a high school graduate. I just graduated from Goldsboro High School. It'll be two weeks this Friday. I've been going to the Boys and Girls Club since two thousand and twelve. This summer would make six years, but I'm not gonna be able to go this summer because I'm enlisted in the Army. The Boys and Girls Club has been a major part of my life. What do you guys think the Boys and Girls Club is? Sorry.
Well, the Boys and Club, to me, is an escape from trouble. It was an escape for me as a kid, because I got a chance to learn carpentry, you know, have mentors. Lot of great things happened for me at that Boys Club that you went to.
Of course, Mayor, what do you think the?
As Councilmember, I think it's a great place to help in our community. Have the kids in our community with some structure.
It is. It is all of those. It is an after-school program, it's a summer program, it's a place to keep kids off the streets, but if you actually take, you know, everything that they give you and take, you know, advantage of all the opportunities and take care of the love and the affection that they give you there, it could become a home. For me, the Boys and Girls Club of Goldsboro has been a home. And I'm telling you, I advise that all of you send anybody there to the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Club has so many opportunities. I'm telling you, it can give you mentors, give you friends, job experience. I know Mr. Patrick, he actually taught me how to fill out my first job application, and I actually got my first job because of him, you know, helping us and stuff like that, you know, with the after-school programs. And I just want to come up here and say thank you to all of you for supporting the Boys and Girls Club, because without you, and also without the people and their parents and stuff like that, we wouldn't be able to have, you know, the Boys and Girls Club experience and, you know, be able to, you know, breed and have, you know, the Goldsboro Boys and Girls Club kids, them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
You know I'm gonna say just a word or two, right?
You'll do well. What'd you say?
I said, you know I'm gonna say a word or two. I'll be short and sweet. Yeah, we were talking about coming up the steps. What are we gonna do when Xavier leaves? Xavier, will you help us do this?
He's a, he's a great asset to us and with all of the other club members that we have.
And I wanted to start out, first of all, with just these right here. I've got thirty years of Boys and Girls Club life standing in front of you. So, some are seven years, some six years, four years, one month, two months. The nice shy, quiet one, it's never shy and quiet if you ever walk into the Boys and Girls Club at three o'clock in the afternoon. We do want to thank you all for all that you have done in the past for the Boys and Girls Club, and hope you continue to keep the Boys and Girls Club in the forefront, if it's at all possible. It is, it is vital to us continuing to serve the youth in the county for those who want to choose our services. And we just want to thank you.
Thank you. You do a great job. We can't say it as bad as Xavier, or as good as Xavier did, but we know y'all do a great job, and you kids are in great hands, and you stay at the Boys Club, okay? And we appreciate what all of you do.
And he goes to boot camp, basics, excuse me?
I leave next Monday. Well, you just stay safe.
Congratulations, young man.
Get in shape. Thank y'all. Thank you.
And his reserve's gonna be right back here in Goldsboro, and he's coming back to the club.
There you go. Good evening, ma'am.
I get to follow that.
Okay, you're doing fine.
My name is Sally Johnson. Last November, I retired from the city after working for forty-two years in the planning department. And this is the first time I've ever had a chance to really look at a city budget as just a taxpayer and not an employee. So, there were some things that I, that caught my eye, some things that I thought needed to be addressed, and I'll go ahead and just start. In the city's council, it showed, in the city council's budget, it shows that there's a seven hundred and twenty dollars budgeted as a cell phone stipend. It's my understanding that this amount covers sixty dollars per month for one councilman's phone expenses, which I believe is absurd. Council members receive city-related phone calls on their personal phones all the time. However, that should be considered the price of serving the citizens in this capacity. In the interest of fairness to all, this expenditure should be eliminated. Under the consultant fees line item, an increase of eighty thousand has been included for a whopping total of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. It is my understanding that this is due to the funding of a strategic plan. While I applaud the council's willingness to look forward, I believe more detail is needed as to what is actually constituting a plan and what the council hopes to learn. And speaking of studies, I understand that a pay study has also been funded at a cost of twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, and I know that this is occasionally necessary to make sure that the city stays competitive in its salaries and benefits. And over my forty-two years of working for the city, I saw six or seven of these done. And it seemed like each time, we didn't see the report, but there were cherry-picking going on as to who should get moved up, who should get moved down, who should stay the same. I know that the last time, we heard that it was gonna cost two million dollars to implement that study, and it was never implemented. And if you're not prepared to follow the recommendations of the study, you might as well save the twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. In the community slash employee functions and awards line item, the cost has risen dramatically from last year, when it was funded at about forty-three hundred dollars. This year's budget proposes thirty-four thousand and fifty dollars, an increase of just under thirty thousand. It's my understanding that the city manager, upon urging from at least one council member, wants to designate five thousand dollars for the mayor and each council member to hold a block party for their respective districts. While I believe this is a very irresponsible way to spend taxpayers' dollars, there could also be some legal implications, given that a council member hosting a party in their district may use it as an incentive to encourage voting for him at the next election to be held in November. Costs for glad-handing and any other district functions or parties should be borne by the elected official and not by taxpayer funds. Gentlemen, there are people working for the city that don't make thirty thousand dollars. And I would ask that you would, would think about this expenditure, and if you do decide to keep that funding in there, that it should be stipulated that any party or any function or whatever it's called in your discretionary fund not take place until after the elections in November. The council's travel line item is also proposed to be increased by over fourteen thousand dollars in the upcoming budget, for a total of about thirty thousand dollars. I think there needs to be more oversight in this regard, taxpayers, employees of the city. We have difficulty understanding that kind of an expense. While your citizens tighten their belts and make do with less, the council should also be willing to at least hold the line on costs that are not necessary. And finally, to prove I'm not just picking on the council, I have a couple other general questions. Why in the world is the city going to allocate over two hundred thousand dollars for new equipment at the compost plant when the revenues were forty-four thousand last year? And does the distribution and collections division really need a sixty thousand pickup truck, sixty thousand dollar pickup truck? And does the fire department need a thirty-two thousand five hundred dollar pickup truck? It's mind-blowing to think of spending almost a hundred thousand dollars on two vehicles. And that's about all I have. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you, and I appreciate all that you do for the city.
Thank you for what you've done. I want to thank you for your forty-two years of service. Nobody knows the City of Goldsboro like Sally Johnson does the City of Goldsboro. And I do also want to tell you one more thing that I should have said initially, is this is our proposed budget proposed by the staff, and Sally knows that. The council hasn't reviewed this budget, other than just being exposed to it, and we're having a work session on Thursday. So, I think it's important to know that all of these comments we hear tonight, everybody's hearing them, and that's the purpose of this public hearing, and I should have said that early on, is because you maintain somebody's mind by something you say tonight. So, if there's something in your budget, or something in this budget, if you have an issue with it, you should definitely tell us. Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, while you're there, thank you for the comment. I brought up the cell phone issue myself. And also, you know, another issue that, you know, you might want to look into is just the council feeding itself. I mean, we are all grown men. We can eat before we come here, if need be. We shouldn't be spending the taxpayers' money on food for us. That should be going to the taxpayers as well, in some way, form, or fashion. I mean, I think it's ridiculous that we spend, I think, around four thousand dollars a year on meals for us to eat at council meetings, you know, so.
And I know you've talked about that before, and it's been voted to keep on doing that.
Yes.
But it's a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like, yes, ma'am?
My name is Alicia Pierce, and I was going to make a point about that munching as well. As a citizen, and especially coming behind her, as she mentioned, if you can't have a block party that includes citizens, then clearly, our mayor and councilman should not be eating off of our tax dollars either. So, there is a huge question in my mind as to why six thousand dollars is being spent annually for you all to eat before you meet? And I really would ask that when you meet on Thursday in your additional meetings, that you consider that. I know Councilman Foster has brought it up before, but if you're gonna say, take away the five thousand for our district, which we are inclusive in that, then you clearly should take it away from that. I do have, the rest of mine are more so questions. In looking at the mayor and councilman budget, who receives the honorarium?
We all do, except for the mayor. I don't think the mayor is accepting his.
Because there's an honorarium, so the way that budget looks, though, is that there's just one honorarium. That's a split, that four, forty thousand dollars, is that a split between all of you? All right. What is the mayor's star award?
That is where I donated my salary back to the city, and the city and each employee does something above and beyond the call of duty. It's a stipend that is, that is done by the Human Resources Department and I think the manager's office.
Okay, perfect, great. And then, the downtown development, from what I can see and from some meetings I've been at, our public work area, there was, remember, there was a citizen that was having some issues with her sewage or septic tank or something, and we were saying, there was just no money, or that's just not something that's normally covered through the public works. But the downtown development's budget is one hundred and eighty-two thousand, and the public works is two hundred and nine. It's only like a twenty thousand dollar difference, and something that I feel like touches the whole entire city, but yet, we're giving a huge budget of a hundred and eighty-two thousand just for downtown development? How much more development do we need to do?
Just to answer your question, the downtown development's salaries, but public works, I'm not sure what you're seeing. Public works is millions of dollars, it's not just two hundred thousand. So, I'm not sure what line item you're, you might be looking at one specific line item, but public's works is millions.
Is way larger than that? Okay, because, yeah, because I was like, wow, that's not a whole lot.
In the DGC, most of that money is salary.
So, most of this one hundred and eighty-two thousand is salary? So, are they doing the development? Are they the ones out there in the heat, making the development work?
I just told you what line item it was, ma'am.
Well, that's something that I would like for you guys to consider when you have your discussions on Thursday and going in the future, that we might want to look at how that one hundred and eighty-two thousand is really being spent. That is a concern for me as a citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Somebody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. And Pinky, Ms. Jacobs, I'll get you next. Good evening.
I left too early the last time. I watched it on the computer, and I'm gonna tell you something right now. Anybody gets censured up there behind that counter, it ought to be you. And you need to step down. That man right there has been nothing but kind in general. Did you two get the letters that I had delivered to your offices?
What letter? Today, yesterday?
I had delivered them on the third of June.
You delivered it today? I haven't been to the office today.
Pardon?
I've not been in my office today.
No. On the third of June.
Today is third of June.
Okay, I delivered, I delivered them last week. Y'all need to do something about it. You need to read them letters and get on. That man right there has had probable cause, and I've seen it from the people in my building and from other people downtown, to bust somebody up beside their head with a damn brick. And he hasn't done it. The man has got four more patients than I have. If I see something going on down there and I'm outside, I'm going down there with my knobs on my leg, and I'm gonna help him out.
Thank you, ma'am.
And again, where's the chief?
I don't think he's here, ma'am.
Well, he was standing back there just a minute.
I'm sorry, I don't see.
You need to talk to him and tell him to get his damn little buddies out of the street on his skateboard.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And I'm gonna tell you, Mr. Williams, you got a bunch of people downtown supporting you. I don't give a damn what anybody says. We're behind you a thousand and one thousand. And you have had too many years in the government. You need to get your butt out and do some real work, and I'm gonna tell you something, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
You better clean up your own dirt before you start looking at anybody else.
Thank you, ma'am. You have a good night.
And you need to get busy on it.
Ma'am, this is a budget here. We got the public comment coming up, you can come by. This is about the budget.
So, figure out the budget and spend it more wisely than what you be doing.
There you go. Thank you, ma'am. You have a good night. All right. Anybody else who would speak about the budget? Good evening, ma'am.
Hey, I'm not going to speak long, but definitely with the budget, once again, I always stress it every year, just please be mindful, Boys and Girls shouldn't have to come ask and bring children every, I know you give them something, but I'm just saying, when we're looking at budgets of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for bathrooms, when we're looking at budgets of, you know, ten thousand dollars just for regular stuff, pictures downtown, those are people. Did you hear that young man talking? Like, have you been homeless, or understand that? So I know it's hard for you to look at me, I know it's hard for you to face me, I know it's hard for you to keep hearing this, but I'm going to need y'all to really be accountable. Mayor, I appreciate you giving your money back. You should, because you ain't paying the people at Leonard Inn, or your taxes, or none of that other stuff. So it's cute to do it in public, but did you do it in your personal life, respecting the humanity of people? So all I'm saying is, the budget, the way you spend your money, the poverty mindset is, you waste money. So don't look at the black community or the poor people and say, well, they waste money, you waste money. We don't need a Herman Park Center, we need a school. Mr. Martin, you praying that what I say happened? I hope so, because I hope focus comes. And she's right, we shouldn't be at home scrimping and saving, working three and four jobs, and people that bust they tail for your city are making less than thirty thousand, and then you can't even put an adequate amount of money in the right places. So everybody, everybody's just not there. So I'm just asking you to take your time and think, when you look at the budget, because you're only thinking about yourselves, and you're not thinking about the majority of your community, which is in poverty. Thank you.
Ms. Jacobs, Ms. Jacobs, hold on, I was just saying. Yes, ma'am. You want to go home?
Yes, anybody else? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. How's everybody?
Good evening.
Good. My name is Mark Colebrook. I am a school teacher at Broadden Middle School. Last year, I came and stood before you and asked for teacher's supplements, and that was before you guys went into your session. And I remember the first reason I got was that it was illegal, that we couldn't do that. And then I know that Councilman Foster and Councilman Williams brought it up again, and then it was decided that, I think the last city manager said something to the effect that it wouldn't matter, the supplement wouldn't matter to the teachers anyway. And so I thought that was rather offensive, because teachers need any amount of money, particularly the teachers in the city. And so I am back again, on behalf of the educators, because I know that no one in this room can stand up and say that their lives have not been touched by a teacher. There's nobody in this room can say that. No matter what profession you're in, being an elected official, being somebody that's worked for a degree, no matter where you are in life, a teacher has been a part of that. So I know, reading in the paper, the county commissioners have proposed that they do an increase, and so what I'm proposing is that you guys, at least, if not for the whole county, because I know you're responsible for the city schools, but for the city schools, I am here asking that when you guys meet on Thursday, that you consider a supplement. It is not illegal, there are other cities that do it, there are other city councils that do it. So I'm asking, on behalf of the educators of Wayne County and the City of Goldsboro, that you guys consider at least starting to give them some type of supplement, because I know that when Carver Heights was in jeopardy of being taken over by ISD, everybody came out of the woodworks to show up for the photo ops and all those things there, and say, yep, save our schools. Well, we can't save our schools if we can't pay our teachers. So all these Boys and Girls Club, all the kids and things like that, it definitely starts with the teachers. So I'm asking, again, this year, that you consider a supplement for our teachers for the City of Goldsboro. Thank you.
Ms. Colebrook, while you're there, and you mentioned Carver Heights, I recently sat with her, personally at Carver Heights. And while I was there, she was telling me, her number one thing was teacher's supplement.
Yes, sir.
And just how hard it is to keep teachers over there. And I explained to her that, you know, and I proposed that, and it was turned down, this boy. And she couldn't believe it, because she said that, you know, the mayor and Councilman Broadway and others go over there and they read to the kids and they do all those things. And I was trying to explain to her that that's a great photo op, you know, it's a great way to say I'm doing something, but when it really, really counts, you know, that vote always changes. So I'm glad and I'm thankful that you came up here and you spoke on those issues, because she couldn't, she just couldn't believe it coming from me. But now, maybe she's watching this and she sees the real deal. So I thank you.
Yeah, I thank you. And again, you know, we just had the mayor's youth council come up, and you heard and read and talked about all the accolades, and you said that's a great job and things like that. But if we can't lead by example and be role models, then let's just do away with the mayor's youth council. Let's do away with it.
Anybody else want to speak on the budget? Yes, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Lilian Covington. I live at nine oh seven North Virginia Street in Goldsboro. I moved there in nineteen eighty-five. The city of Goldsboro drainage system runs under my house and a house next door. We don't have to have a hurricane, all we have to have is a hard rain, and we flood all over the place. Now, I may be the only one standing here, but you better believe there's some more neighbors out there that are remembering that they're taxpayers and they're voters. When you put out the bid to redo the drainage system, take it from my now house and put it in the street where it should be, you budgeted a hundred thousand dollars. At the time, I said to Mr. Anderson, that much money? He said, that or more. When the bids came in, the cheapest one was right at four hundred thousand. They ran from right at four hundred thousand to about five thousand, a little more. What that tells me is that the city of Goldsboro put out an estimate of a hundred thousand dollars for a budget, for a project, that they did not research. Because had you researched it, you would have been closer to what the actual budget would be. And now you want me to stand here and understand how you can tell me that the budget is overpriced? When it rains, I can park my car on one side of my yard, and if it rains much that night, I had to get a tow truck to tow me out of my front yard. When it rains underneath my house, not only mine, theirs next door, we've lost furnaces and all that kind of stuff, now for the hurricane from rain, you tow down two houses down on the corner. The one that's on the odd side of the street, you put some dirt in there. That dirt is now coming right out to the street, right down to the drain that runs under my house. Now, Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Anderson, were all out there after the flood. They were going to unstop the one under my house. They had this instrument, and they went, Mr. Anderson, the engineer, went and took the manhole up and said, y'all come look at this. The thing got to where it was stopped up and turned and went back to where it was a free area. You were going to get a truck that would do something. They got the truck. Mr. Fletcher told me that last week, or the week before, the end of the week before, but they haven't been back out there and unstopped under my house. Now, even unstopping under my house would not get rid of that water. That water belongs to the City of Goldsboro and should be in the drain system for the City of Goldsboro. Please reconsider your budget. We are taxpayers. Most of us that are in there now that are homeowners are seniors, some are on dialysis. The night you voted to discard my budget, I was holding my blood pressure so high I couldn't get out of bed, because you know I'm usually sitting here, but I wasn't here on the eighteenth of March. I was, I hold my blood pressure. We've got people over there that's got blood pressure, heart conditions, on dialysis, and they having trouble getting out of their house, because you won't fix the water. Please reconsider your budget. As many millions as you're talking about, five hundred thousand to keep a neighborhood safe is not a lot of money. Now, it's a lot of money to me, yeah, but not when you're looking at the complete city and the budget that you're dealing with. I think y'all have done us a great disservice. You know how long this has been on the books? When Mr. Anderson, the engineer, came to Goldsboro in two thousand and eight, he told me today, he came in January, he went to the engineering department in July. It was on the books then, way back when X, Altman, Jimmy Warwick and them were up here. It was way back then, and you turned it down then. It's taken this long to get it back to this area at this stage, and now you want to turn us down again? Y'all need to think about where you live. We can't live up there, but we want to be decent where we do live.
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, what's your name?
My name is Lilian Lavon Covington.
Thank you, Ms. Covington, for speaking on this. Councilman Williams and myself, we proposed infrastructure, and instead of building an eleven million dollar gym, putting that money in the infrastructure, because it's needed all around, in his district, in my district, and Mark's district as well. And it makes no sense.
Congressman, Councilman Williams, to tell you about when I tried to go to see him. When I left him, he still didn't know what I went for.
Yes, ma'am.
This water.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, how are you, ma'am?
My name is Aiden George.
Good to see you, Ms. George.
And I know all of y'all are familiar with me. I'm the founder and a director of the Community Crisis Center for over forty years.
You're doing great, ma'am.
And I am enjoying what I'm doing, but I need a dumpster. I've already talked to you about that. My classmate bought me a dumpster in the nineties, and I had it patched up, there's squirrels, the rats and everything, is pulling it out. We have to get the boys to pick up trash and all that kind of stuff. I'm eighty-one years old, and I had a stroke in two thousand and five, major stroke, and the doctor said, now I'm having mini stroke because of stress. But I've been there too long, because I'm afraid, Mr. Chuck, and these people are not going to do what I've done there.
I understand, I understand.
Beating them, giving them baths and all that kind of stuff. But I think y'all.
Not the one, Ms. George, I just think we know that.
So I thank the city for what it has been giving to me, and I pulled the, looked at the names, and I was going to call you all, because the telephone numbers are there. I wish you all would come by and just check and see what I'm doing on South Slugger Street. The Lord has blessed me and I'm still working. And I'm a nonprofit organization, and I do get money from FEMA for the food, and sometimes we feed a hundred a day. So you all come by to see me at the crisis center before I close my eyes.
Ms. George, you need a dumpster there? You need a dumpster?
I need a dumpster.
And you need some money too, don't you?
Yes.
You need seventy-four hundred dollars, didn't you? When, last time I spoke to someone at your organization, you said you need about seventy-four hundred dollars to help inadequate with what you need, and I was speaking about that to Ms. Catherine Gwynne earlier this year, before we got the budget started. So I, Ms. Williams and I, we both are in understanding of what you need, but I'm going to continue, and he is as well, we're going to continue to fight for what you need, and we're going to figure out a way to, see if we can't get you that dumpster, because there's several dumpsters in this city that are not being utilized properly. So we can most definitely find that. But I don't, I don't see why there wouldn't be a reason Rick couldn't have gotten you a dumpster if you, Rick, you asked Rick for a dumpster. That makes no sense to me.
Thank you, Ms. George.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Would anybody else like to speak on the budget? Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, George.
Hello, city council.
Good evening.
My name's Georgia Dees, and I'm the executive director of the Arts Council of Wayne County. And I'm here tonight, first to say thank you for, to the city for including us in the budget again this year. And to let you know, some of the things that we're trying to do, as you probably know, I've been in this position for less than a year, and we're at a very, we're at a turning point, and we have to make a lot of changes and make a lot of hard decisions coming up in this coming year. And so we would appreciate your financial support, but also your full support if we come to talk to you about any issues that we have, if we could have some of your time, if we could get you to come to some of our events. We had an event Friday night that the North Carolina Arts Council funded for us at the Arts Council, it was a jazz performer, and we had a full house. And it was a very diverse crowd and audience, that's what we like to see, and that's what we're working to build, and we are seeing more of that. Today was our first day of summer camp. We are offering, and I've got a schedule here of all the camps we're offering this summer for children when they're out of school. We're working with the library on the event that she, they're talking about the summer learning, we're one of their partners on that Saturday. And so we had nineteen kids there this morning, participating in summer camp, learning art and using art as an educational tool, and also to build friendships and be creative. And for adults, it's a great way, art is a great reliever of stress, and I know we have a lot of stressed out people these days. So we have classes, we have camps, we have an arts academy in the fall and the winter, and we're doing all these things that we want to offer for the whole community, the city, the county, everybody. We've reached a large group of people, and we just appreciate your support in this coming year, because we have some serious needs. This is Peggy Howe, she's our board president right now.
Just to echo what Georgia has said, we thank you all for what you've done in the past, and we look forward to you continuing your support to us. And we most certainly urge you, the council, and you, the citizens of Goldsboro, to come to the Arts Council to take part in all of the programs that we offer. We offer a wider range of programs for children and for adults to keep the arts alive, and if we don't do that, then we lose that creativity through education and in our community. So just to, you know, just to stand here before you, just to implore you, please come out and take part. Of course, you know, we get funded from the state, and that does not cover what we need. We're going through a transition, as Georgia said, and of course, any transition costs money, and we're always in need of, we have a great program already started for the children, we have a few scholarships left over that we offer to children who are underprivileged in the community. So please come out and figure and find out what we actually do, so that you know what we have to offer. So again, thank you for your support, and we look forward to your continued support.
Thank you.
This Friday is a great opportunity to come. We have First Friday, the First Friday of every month. This month, we have two openings. Robert Rigsby, who is a former citizen here who has passed away, we have a lot of his artwork in the main gallery downstairs. And upstairs, we have an event, Texas Wilds by an artist from Durham. We also have the recital of our, I mentioned that we have students, music students, their recital is this Friday night during First Friday. And if you want to hear some talent and the things they've learned that have changed their lives, this is a great time to come see it and hear it. So thank you.
Ms. George, I have, I don't mean to cut you off, I just have one quick question.
Sure.
Because I know you and I have had several conversations, I've come to see you and I've come to sit with the Art Council, because you guys have been my second family, because the arts is what saved me as a child. But I just, I'm really concerned for you guys, and I still, my heart goes out to you in regards of your facility. And Ms. Howe, I'm wondering, is there any way, shape, form, or fashion that the council or any individuals that we know that is in elected official seedings at the moment, that possibly could help you in the idols of your facility? Because I know you guys have a high, like, almost five thousand dollar a month rent, so.
That is something that we will be looking at this year. We had our budget approved at our board meeting in May, and that is certainly one of the things we have to consider, is where we are going to be in the future physically. We are a nonprofit, and we do not own our building, we do pay rent. And I think there's a misconception with many people in town that think we do own the building that we're in, but we don't, we currently rent that. So we will be looking at options and considering possibilities to see if we need to make a change there.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, if there's anybody on the council or any artist that has a building that you like to donate us, we would take it in a heartbeat, and I'll get the right of grant to get it up the code, so.
Give me five thousand dollars to pay.
There are many.
Absolutely, it is.
I was at a conference in Raleigh in March, and there are many communities whose, for the county or the city or someone does provide the building and the expenses for the building for a charge of one dollar a year. So it is something that could be, could be done, it's being done in other places, so that's certainly something we'd be looking at as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome, thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on the budget? Anyone? Anyone else like to speak on the budget? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is John Barnes, twenty-one oh five North Weaver Street, Second Director for Rebuilding Broken Places. First of all, thank you for the five thousand dollars you considered in your budget that will be used for our summer camp. But I'm here to, also to address in, as your bu, in your budget session, is to consider the summer food program. Uh, we've been doing the summer food program for about ten years here in Wayne County. But we have only done the program at two sites. That's at our site and at Greenie Church. We did that because the summer food program is a reimbursement program. That means that you want to get reimbursed for the food you serve. And currently, the state only reimburses you three dollars and sixty-six cents per meal. And that three dollars and sixty-six cents, it covers everything you have to do to operate that program. Salaries, your food, your supplies, transportation, if you're transporting the food. All that comes in that three dollars and sixty-six cents. So reason we, and that's why we stayed at two locations, because if you, we sent out forty meals and thirty meals are served, we eat the ten meals. So, uh, this year, when we did application, we only did two sites. Greenleaf and Rebuilding Broken Places. We got a call from State Office asking us to reconsider serving other sites because, uh, one of the agencies that was serving Wayne County is not doing it no more. That was the Food Bank, Food Bank decided not to. So we, uh, had a conversation with my board and the board said, okay, you can serve some more sites. So we picked up Herman Park Center, W A Foster, and West Haven City Citizen Complex. And that was going to be it. We got another call from them and said, could you serve one more site? So we picked up Jefferson Court. Uh, we are starting that program on July, June seventeenth and a run through August sixteenth. I'm asking the city to help us in funding that program because my board has said we can do it. But if I see that we are losing money, costing us money, we're going to cut sites out. And we don't, once we start it, I don't want to cut sites out because kids need to eat.
That's right, that's right.
Just the, we will not get reimbursed for anything that we spend until the first week of October, excuse me, July. Reimbursement goes in the first of the month. And so really, in July, I can only get reimbursement for two weeks. But I've done fed six sites, so that's, that reimbursement is not even going to cover what I, what we have put up front. Because when I take into the other sites, there's things I got to buy. Means the food, when it go out, we will be, it will be cooked food at the restaurant at Rebuilding. So we're going to have to buy insulating cabinets so the food go out. So when the kids get it, it's going to be hot. So those are the things that we got to buy upfront, all the supplies that we have to buy. And the board said, when I initially talked to them, it was two sites. Now we're talking about six sites. So we meeting, I'll meet with the board, some of the board members tomorrow and get them updated as to how much money I'm going to need. And we are nonprofit, just like everybody that's getting here. We're nonprofit and all the money we get is, if we get grants, it is restricted monies for that particular grant. So this program here, I don't have any money in-house. I'm having some other funds I can get from it, but I got to make sure if I get ten thousand from it, I got to make sure that ten thousand goes back. Because I got to cover what I remove out of that. So just, I spoke to some of you about it, but the rest of them need, here, here, same thing that I said to the other gentleman, that we're talking about six sites. And again, it's a, it is a reimbursement program. And that's why I, I was leering up front to say yes. But I know that the kids need to eat during the summer. So we're going to take that risk, but we want someone else to help take that risk with us. Thank you.
How much additional money are you talking about that you might need?
I'll know tomorrow if we're putting down the figures about how much we got to buy upfront, the food, uh, the.
Mr. Barnes, I know you spoke about, when I spoke with you, we had a conversation last week, um, about Wednesday or Thursday of last week. You and I had a conversation in regards, you just needed an extra five thousand for your summer youth program. Not just about the feeding of, of youth and, and individuals that are in, that are homeless or however, that are in need of food. But you also spoke about an extra five thousand dollars that you needed for your program, is that correct?
Yes, but that wasn't, the food program is a different, different program.
I'm just trying to make sure that you can get the exact amount, you know, that you needed. Because I know we have, we're, we're funding a part that we don't even technically, not, not all the citizens of Goldsboro are used. But I would like to try to see if we can take some of those fundage from that to make sure that your program gets funded properly. Because that's what me and I spoke about.
But ten. Five plus the ten, you talking about, you talking about the, uh, the summer camp and all that stuff?
Summer camp and the, and the, and the, and the feeding. So you can get the, get that number to us, I, I, I won't be fighting for you, I promise you that.
Mr. Barnes, what was the date where you said you needed volunteers to come in so they can be certified?
Now, with the summer food program, anyone who's participating in the program has to go through training. So we're doing a training Thursday at six o'clock at Rebuilding Broken Places. I know people like to volunteer, but once the program starts, and I tell the site supervisor, if someone comes in, can I help sell the chicken? Have it been trained? The answer is no. And if, and I told the site supervisor, if you violate the rules, we'll close it down. Because the state's not going to go back to the site, you're going to come to me.
So you're saying that, that you're having a training for volunteers this Thursday, six o'clock, Rebuilding Broken Places?
And we'll do another one later on, but this is the, because we start on this. Yeah, so we don't, this will be June sixth.
So Rebuilding Broken Places needs volunteers, anybody who's able to come, of age, please show up. We, you know, you're going to be feeding kids, it's only an hour.
Yeah, it'll be served from twelve to one.
And you bring up a good point, you say of age, what is the of age?
There's no, uh.
Sixteen, eighteen, twenty-one?
Uh, sixteen, 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 because all they're going to be doing is just, they won't be cooking. So, sixteen.
Sixteen and up.
Sixteen and up, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Would anybody else like to speak on the budget? Anybody else like to speak on the budget? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. It was not my intent to make any comments this evening. I needed pause from it, but, uh, I feel compelled to touch on some points about the budget, which I have not heard anyone address.
Okay.
And my main concern is the debt that the city has. And it's frightening. Very frightening. And when you look at what we're paying out from the budget each year to pay down on this debt and look at what is outstanding in balance and principle, it's going to be years and years before this debt is paid off. And on top of that now, we're going to be adding for the eleven point one million for Herman Park Center, which will not hit the budget in the next physical year, but it's coming. And it's going to come in the following year. And, and that, that concerns me because while we're paying off this debt, there is no money to pay for intra-infra- infrastructure, repairs to the infrastructure. And that's one of the reasons why we ended up with this four dollar and fifty cents a month payment that the residents here in the city who have water end up having to pay for the repairs to the infrastructure. And, and it's just sad. It's sad, it's sad when I look at things like, uh, the Paramount Theater, for example. And I look back and see that we've lost over three hundred.
Talking back there, I can't hear. If somebody's talking in the audience, would you please refrain from doing that? Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Barnes, go ahead.
Over three hundred thousand dollars lost in the last, in, in the last physical year on the Paramount Theater. And, uh, uh, some other things, multi-sports complex, uh, that's another debt that we have to pay off. The golf course is another, we're losing over two hundred thousand dollars a year. That's five hundred thousand just on those two, Paramount Theater and Golf Course, that we have to pay out of the budget in the next physical year. And we don't have any money to put into infrastructure. I look at the budget and, and what do we pay, what do we have on the budget for street paving? Zero dollars, zero dollars. And we've got several streets here in the city that have no pavement at all. And they're in the older areas, which means that, uh, for years, they've been paying property taxes like everyone else and not getting any benefit at all from it. I look in the neighborhood which I live in and I'm quite blessed to be there. And for fourteen years, I have not seen any repairs done on the street that I live on. And during that period of time, because of the garbage trucks coming through and everything, the street is cracking right down the center. And I think a sealant on it would cut down on further erosion from this crack. Because as I ride through my neighborhood on my bike, I'm riding over ruts in streets that are older where they've not seen any repairs in such a long period of time that they have weeds that are growing through them. Those are streets that are not going to be repaired unless you go out and repave the whole street. So I'd like to see more money being focused towards going, uh, for infrastructure as opposed to investing it in, uh, in a project like the Herman Park Recreation Center, which would be a nice thing to do, but we still have to sit back and look at all this debt we're facing. And, and that, that, that concerns me because some of this debt, uh, or, or some of this money that's coming out of the budget is going to go for things like the golf course. And a few years ago, I came up and made a presentation about the golf course and how much we were losing money. And I pointed out that seventy percent, I believe it was, of the members of the golf course are not city residents. So in effect, what the city residents are doing is supplementing the golf that's being played by non-city residents. And, and that to me is a waste of time. Also at that meeting, uh, there was a lot of discussion about improvements that they're going to make to cut the losses at the golf course. They haven't been cut. They've continued to grow larger over the years. And when you look at what is being budgeted, you're budgeting for them to lose over two hundred thousand dollars in the next year, I do believe. Well, that's what's going to happen at the end of the year because their revenue is going to be down from what I've seen. You're forecasting a reduction in revenue. You're also forecasting a reduction in expenses. But I have, I've, you know, got some concerns about how the expenses out there at the golf course have been handled or mishandled. So those, those are some of the concerns that I have when I look at that, that budget. And I think that, uh, I believe it was Councilman Acock at the end of the, uh, discussion that I had, uh, a couple of years ago, who made a statement that if there isn't any improvement in the golf course, I'll be the one to make the motion to close it. Well, Councilman Acock, make the motion. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on the budget?
I've got one more thing to say about the budget.
You've already spoke, but you can speak during the public comment period, okay? It's coming up next, okay? Is anybody else going to speak on the budget? Okay, seeing now one, we're going to close the public hearing for the budget and we're going to move to our public comment period, which you may be the first to speak. And if you'd like to speak about the budget, you're fine to do that.
If I'd like to speak at the.
About the budget, you're fine to do that as well. You said you had something to say about the budget.
These two ladies that came up here, sitting right back there. You got plenty of real estate around here, why don't you donate a building? Or are you too busy shopping?
Why don't you worry about your own business, what am I worried about mine?
Oh honey, let me tell you something. I worked for a police department for four years, I know how to find out stuff.
Okay, ma'am.
And from what I've heard, you got plenty of dirt in your backyard.
You got anything else you need to talk about?
Yeah.
What, that relates to the city, ma'am?
Yes, it does.
Okay, go ahead.
Get the skateboarders off the street again, and I'm going to keep on saying that until it's done. And stay off of that man's back.
Okay.
And like I said, censor yourself, leave him to hell alone.
You have a good night. Would any votes in the public like to speak?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Yeah, good evening. I want to make this quick because of, uh.
Hey, excuse me, can somebody get the door for you?
Because I need to get my son. But, um, what I want to talk about is the, uh, annual action plan, which y'all had brought up in a previous meeting, which was a community block grant. And, um, according to the information online, it is to identify key priorities and goals that will significantly improve, um, low to moderate income citizens of Goldsboro, quality of life through vital housing and, uh, community development program. And while coming out that budget, um, it's integrated with contributions from individuals, community groups and public forums and a few others. So based on that community block grant, I have a few questions. One, um, which individual, um, sections did that community block go, block grant go to? Um, where and who has the money been used for? Um, along with that, I've heard that there's been a request for a forensic audit, basically to see where the money's been going. Because I can tell by how the young lady asked so nonchalantly about the community block grant to go to a splash pad in the bathroom, um, it's highly possible that there's been some misallocation, you know, funds being misappropriated. I'm just assuming so based on how she just asked for the money. I know some, a few people spoke up against it, but it's also possible nothing will, will come from it. So maybe you should look into that when you go over your little annual plan, uh, for this particular year. Also, um, in light of that, has any of the money been awarded, um, to District One? And I only say that because of the allegations that have coming up, came up against Councilman Williams. And if what is said is true, that anything brought up in court was dismissed because the claims were considered to be false, how can the council run an independent investigation based on something that's not there? And I've also heard that you was in the military and I'm assuming if you're a military man, that you have a little bit of integrity. And if you do have that, if there's any false claims against the people who sit up here, what kind of dis, what kind of discipline action will come against the people who work in the city, against the, uh, council themselves? So maybe, um, I'm assuming that you might look, look into that. So with that being said, I do want to know where the money has been, are going to with the community block grant and the discipline action that you're going to take on the allegations brought up against Councilman Williams as, as false. And, uh, one more thing, I did wanted to tell the young kids, but of course they had to go to sleep, that you said, um, that, that education brings out equality. I did want to tell them that they're born equal, uh, to everybody else regardless if they have their education or not. So I wouldn't want them to feel down or anything else because you made that ridiculous statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Good evening again. I want to come and make a statement again, uh, in support of Councilman Williams. And I don't normally agree with Councilman Mark Stevens, but I have to say at the five o'clock meeting, you said something that finally I can agree with and that this has gone on too long and that you were stating that you guys, as far as you felt like you were not, don't understand law. And I mentioned this the last meeting, you're not judges, you're not lawyers. So I'm in agreement with you and I'm also in agreement with you that it should be over. And it should have been over once a judge, which I think happened in either November, December, based on the paper, a judge found that the plaintiff did not have enough evidence to stake her claim. So I'm still not sure why this council. Why this council feels that you should keep pushing this, because he's right. You should be more concerned about the incident the gentleman just made, that his street hasn't been paved. And you said that, so I'm finally in agreement with something that you said because normally I'm not. But however, I still state that we need to let that go. It is, went to court, because you even said, you said this is a judicial thing. It should be done with the judge, there was a judge. And the judge said it was a, not enough evidence. And the judge said it was not enough evidence. Councilman Foster, I asked you last meeting, and maybe I need to put it in writing, what needs to be done to further, based on the lawyer's report, our mayor has violated two codes. What needs to be done to further make sure that he gets a hearing for that? Do I need to put it in writing? Because when I asked you to bring it up, it didn't get brought up. I was in the five o'clock meeting, and I'm here again, it has not been brought up. What do I need to further make sure that that is addressed? As a private citizen, I'm a taxpayer, I'm sorry, eight oh six South Taylor, I'm a homeowner. Because they claim that, you know, if you don't own your home, I own mine. So I pay taxes, and I, as a citizen, I want things to be done based on the fact that I'm a voter, and I pay my taxes.
At this time, I mean, I'm more than happy to make another motion. Will that motion pass?
Well, I know that five to two happens all the time.
And I mean, I don't know what outside sources we can start calling, emailing, to find, to get someone to come in and take a look at it. I don't know that right offhand, but I'll definitely look into it and get back to you as soon as I can.
Right, and I don't understand, if we actually say that, I don't know how the mayor can also vote against something that's against himself. So that five to two shouldn't have happened even last meeting. And you guys know you're wrong. I don't know how you sleep with yourselves, but Godspeed.
Thank you ma'am. Thank you.
I absolutely, my name is Councilor. I too had no intention of getting up here to say a thing. But you know, I watch you throughout the city. I watch trucks, I watch those same company over and over again, taking care of everything that goes on in this city. I think thoroughly, you need to be re-investigated. Mr. Mayor, please look at me whenever I'm talking to you.
Are you talking to me?
Yes, I am. That you need to be re-investigated. I think that this woman needs to be fired. Because she has been a disgrace to black women of this community, and of this, and of... I have, I got a few more minutes. I have a few more moments. This is public, this is public hearing.
As long as you talk in a rational and...
I don't think, am I rational? No, but, okay, but it's okay for your employee. It is okay for your employee to attack one of our councilmen that we put in office. I'm not wasting my time, I'm telling you, that you need to sit down, she needs to be fired, and you need to be investigated and go to jail.
Last time, thank you ma'am. Would anybody else like to talk?
Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good evening.
My name is Dr. David L. Craig. I live at five oh nine Shelley Drive, Goldsboro, North Carolina. I'm an analyst, and I am also an educator. One of the things I want to say to you is that when you are creating policy, it should be fair. It should not be one side. So I want to make a comment or give you a couple of suggestions in terms of the golf court issue that we're having. One, I'm against it, but if you're going to have it, how about this? How about you have large, explicit signs that identify the neighborhood as a golf court-friendly neighborhood? Then, driving any longer than one hour past dusk should be prohibited. Anyone that does drive past the prohibited timeframe should be fined five hundred dollars. There should be a speed limit of fifteen or twenty miles per hour. And a golf court driver that is found to drive more than five miles over the golf court speed limit should be accompanied, they should have to pay a five hundred dollar fine. Going five miles an hour over the general speed limit in a neighborhood that's identified as a golf court-friendly neighborhood should also be accompanied by a five hundred dollar fine. I see what you're doing, and I, I'm appalled, to be honest with you. I am a quiet man. But now you caused me to come to my feet. And now that I'm here, you're going to have to deal with me. And what I would say is, Mr. Acock, Councilman, buckle up.
Would anybody else in the public like to speak? Anybody else in the public? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is Patrick Lechner, I live at sixteen oh seven East Mulberry Street. I am a public servant for the city of Goldsboro, working Public Works. But I'm not here tonight about that, I am here as a citizen in support of MPI here along with Pastor A. We had the opportunity to see eight young, great, young men and women, recently just graduating, I believe Mayor Allen, you said we would like you to come back after you finish your higher learning. And then we also got to see children from the Boys and Girls Club. One of the things we have to look at when we want to bring into, when we want to, economic growth is, we have to look at our infrastructure. I think it's been said plenty of times, but the infrastructure I'm talking about, mainly talking about the workforce, talking about the quality of life. What MPI does, we do more than just place people into positions of employment. What we really do is we try to encourage and help and grow them, both personally and professionally, so that way we can attract better-paying jobs, not just the minimum wage or just factory jobs. We want well-paying jobs where they can help sustain their families, to where they don't have to work two or three jobs at a time. One of the other things I enjoy doing is, I am a mentor and an instructor with MPI. I've been there with Pastor A since the beginning, since I believe it was two thousand and fifteen, I believe, and when we started out just pretty much in the basement of the church. We teach every Tuesday and Thursday evenings from six to eight. And I just want to go on the record and just say, even though, you know, he is asking for financial help, I'm a volunteer. I do this because that's my passion. The reason why I got to know one of the young men from the Boys and Girls Club is because I mentored there. So I got a free shout-out on that one, Xavier. Mentoring, instructing, and teaching has always been a passion of mine. I grew up not having that in my life, until really I began working for the city of Goldsboro, and I got to meet some great men and women who helped me along my way. So that's just one way for me to give back to my community, is to volunteer and to teach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening. Again, I came up here, again, when I ran for mayor, probably against Mr. Chuck Allen and a few others, again, I did it because I had a heart for my community. Again, I think, again, each of us have our own agenda, why we want to run. But I say in this next election, I promise you, I'm not running. But this is in the next election, I will say, if you're not doing it for the community, please, please step down, please, I beg of you. We are a young generation there, we are coming up, and we don't want to see all this bickering and fighting, and, I mean, it's just unnecessary things that's going on. Again, let's be fair to our community. Again, I just ask that, again, we have Mr. Mark who don't even live here. Every time he come up here and fight for the city of Goldsboro, he have meetings, no one shows up, and he does it every time. He lives all the way here in Dunn, and he fights for city of Goldsboro, the teachers, and he don't even live here, he only work here. But at the same time, I just say in this next election, please, please, if you don't have a heart for the community, please just step down. Please, I beg of you, just to step down, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Good evening.
Good evening. I agree with most people in this room. This whole situation with Mr. Williams is ridiculous. You all are acting like political thugs. There's no other word for it. You and I, you say you stand for truth. How can you stand for truth? When Ms. Carter put in her complaint, October first, Mr. Williams was acting irrational, foaming at the mouth, he was a lunatic. You testified in court, that was not the truth.
Ma'am, I didn't testify in court.
You testified, okay, let me correct you.
No, you let me correct you, I didn't testify.
So you're going to beg her? See, that's part of the problem, see, you think you're exposing...
Let her speak, sir.
You think you're...
Say something, I didn't, something I didn't do.
Do you not have respect for women?
Absolutely, I have respect for everybody.
Okay. Okay, so let me, can you pause my time?
She's fine, hold on, time, you go ahead.
I want to reclaim my time.
Go ahead, I'll give you your time, no problem.
So, as I'm going to say to you again, you say you stand for truth. At a council meeting, you stated on October first, Mr. Williams was not acting irrational. He was professional, he wasn't doing any of the things that Ms. Carter stated. Why have you not continued to publicly come out and say that? Because we all know in this room, let's not act like we don't. We all know in this room that she is lying. We've heard the audio, we've heard the court testimony, we read the documents, we've heard it all. So we know, the judge knew she was lying. You know she's lying, I know she's lying, he knows you're lying, and all of you know she's lying. But you continue, you continue wasting taxpayers' dollars on hiring attorneys. I can't believe you, as a person who was about to be in the legal field, you're going to risk your legal career on this? Your family must be upset. And to also clarify, because we already know, local papers in the pocket of the city. So we know they're going to post a story tomorrow, and they're going to make this report that Ms. Bateman did, sound like it's something that it's not. So let me ask you, Mr. Williams, what in fact is that report that Ms. Bateman from the Forrester Farm did?
It's a, it's a report based on her perspective.
And who did they say Ms. Bateman was coming to do?
She was coming here initially to investigate my complaint. But when she got here, she investigated, she changed up, she tried to entrap me.
Okay, so she was the same Ms. Bateman who came into my store in November and stated she can be a judge, she can be a defense attorney and a prosecutor, correct?
That's correct.
You know that's not true. She's also the same person who came in my store and said she felt it probably was a conspiracy, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and she's also the same person who sat in my store, there's five witnesses to that, that said there is no hostile work environment, there is nothing, correct?
That's correct.
So please, in your ending statements, clarify to the city, because see, they're going to think this report is something that is true. They're going to think this report is law, and it is not. A judge already ruled on it, a chief justice. That means she is the judge over the whole county of Wayne.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, ma'am. Good evening.
Okay, I'm here to speak on behalf of MPI as well. God puts people in your path, I truly believe, and I believe God put Pastor Alexander in my path. I met Pastor Alexander at a meeting of Wayne Forward one day, an organization that I've become involved in. And he said something, when I invited him to come to speak at the Goldsboro Optimist Club, he said something that really resonated with me, and that was, "Each of us is one incident away from being where these young men and women are." And that is true. He also, someone also mentioned that each of us is touched by this, and that is true. I have a family member, my son, who is presently incarcerated. So I speak with a mother's heart, looking for hope. It's, when I heard Pastor A speak, I knew I wanted to be a part of this program. And I feel like it's been really an honor to be affiliated with this program and to help what little bit I can. I wanted to say that I feel that there are three reasons, I'm sure there are more, that I can think of, of why we need to invest in and support this program. One is because we should care about all the members of our community, and these people are members of our community, these men and women. Number two, and this is something else Pastor A said that resonated with me, we're not just touching the lives of these men and women, we're touching the lives of whoever comes into contact with these men and women, and their children, their family members. So it's a large group of people. And third of all, if those aren't enough good reasons, the bottom line being money, save a lot of money if they don't go back to prison. I just want to say that from the time that I was there, and I've helped Mr. Lechner teach this, I was a teacher in a trade, and so I just have seen hope really palpable with these young, with these men and women who are in the program. I hope that we can help keep hope alive for these members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Okay.
This is why I originally came today. Because as a member of District One, we are tired of this stuff with Mr. Williams. Like, it's just very much out of order. It says a lot, because as we see, when you take away his voice, you're taking away our voice. And you're not allowing this opportunity to grow our communities like you're supposed to. So as always, I'm going to come to you with a little bit of Jesus, because I think you need some Bible verses. Y'all take an oath on that Bible every time you come in here. I should call your pastors, because you're out of order. And I'm telling you, Proverbs, right here. It says, "It is not good to punish an innocent man named Antonio Williams or flog officials for their integrity." Like Mr. Bevan Foster has integrity for our community and our people and fights for stuff that's right, and y'all continuously be out of order. I understand everybody was raised, and you have perceptions and misperceptions that plague your mind, that cause you not to be able to see who these men are. But you said that education was the great equalizer. Remember that time I came and gave you some books? Did you read them? No. No, sorta, not, because you all don't read nothing, you don't educate yourself. So how can you make equal decisions? You can't. So that's the first thing, and you said it out of your mouth. Number two, for Proverbs eight twenty, "When I walk in the way of righteousness along the paths of justice, bestowing wealth on those who love me and making their treasures full." You have to walk in righteousness, so the right things go to the right places. Leaders are people who raise standards by which they judge themselves, and by which they are willing to be judged. Just had a conversation earlier, you can't do stuff to other people and say, "Oh, he wrong for this." But you do it too, at home, in private. We don't want those type of leaders, we don't want fake people leading us. That's why half the city act fake, because it starts from the top, trickle down. And, "The world is supplied with people who want to dominate others." A true leader is different. A true leader seeks effective, active ways to benefit the people in the community. He inspires others to follow in his wake, and holding a torch of wisdom, which leads the way to society to realize its generally great aspirations. And I would say, nothing you do inspires people but to lie, cheat, and steal. And you're pushing people to the point of no return. So I'm just asking you to think. Think about the things you're doing, think about the things you're supposed to be doing, and open up Proverbs and read it, most wise leaders do.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? All right, seeing none one, we'll close the public comment period time, and we'll move to consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, in the regular meeting, we move, remove item M, item M.
Yes, sir. So Mayor and Councilmembers' consent agenda items G through U, with the exception of item M, to be addressed at the next meeting, to include item S, as modified during the working session, are presented for your consideration and approval.
I have a question. Is this the, I don't know if it passed, I'm trying to, I was so, I was so blown away by it, but this is including the forty thousand dollars for this?
No, this is, it is not in the consent.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I was like, whoa.
That was item V.
Okay, and that's item B?
No, that's the item V is in thicker.
Items requiring individual action.
All right.
All right. It's including the golf carts, no problem. It is including the golf carts, that's correct. The only thing it is excluding is the Center Street streetscape. And it changed the golf carts age from eighteen to sixteen. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can I ask, before you get the motion?
Sure.
Before you get the motion, can I ask if the golf carts be added to individual item?
You can make that motion.
Can I make that motion, can we add the golf carts to individual item?
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of moving golf carts to individual action, raise your hand. Opposed likewise? All right, so we're moving item S to individual action for an individual action. All right, so now we got the consent agenda minus item M and minus item S for adoption. Move to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call? Yes, ma'am? Yes.
Yes.
No. No, ma'am. Yes. Yes. Okay, the consent agenda passes and now we'll move to item S, which is the golf carts, the ordinance pertaining to golf carts. Is there a motion for that?
I make a motion that we deny the golf carts at all, all costs. That's, I said, I mean, that's, that's my, that's my motion.
There's a motion, a second to deny all golf carts or just deny the orders. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise? All right, so the motion fails and is there a motion to adopt the golf cart ordinance? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise? Motion carries. All right. All right, we move the City Manager's report?
Yes, sir. So I had a chance to meet with all the directors and understand their most significant issues and concerns.
And we need to vote on item V.
We did that in the meeting? Yeah, we did that in the meeting, all right. So you don't need to do it again?
You already voted on D.
Oh, you already voted on D, all right. City Manager's report?
We are moving forward with the hiring process for our Parks and Recs Director and the Golf Course Manager and we're also working on our strategic plan with many of the department heads to measure and meet the goals expected. Thank you.
All right, all right, tonight, with our Councilman Williams? No comment? Um, Mark?
It's been eating at me and eating at me. A lot of things are, can be said, can be called racist and racism. And then there are a lot of things that aren't racist and should be classified as social, economic, and status discrimination. We have both of those in our community. We have economic and social status discrimination among all our people in our community, which when I say that, I mean the whole Wayne County. Not just District One, not just District Three, not just District Six, I ain't going to name all of them, but not just the districts of the city of Goldsboro, but throughout all of Wayne County, from Fremont all the way down to Mont Olive. I have sat here for four years and watched it go down just ridiculously. Then tonight, we wanted to spend forty thousand dollars on getting a television show to come and put us on, on television when the very person that sits on this board knows about it, has been in that industry for more than most of his life and knows how it ran and the county and the city would go and search somebody out. And the same person that knows about it is sitting right here and he could tell you everything about it. And it's like, we want to spend money on something that we don't have to spend money on. It can be brought to you just by snapping my fingers. I have my Art Council, who I think is, thinks the world of, and they're paying four, five thousand dollars in rent to somebody who's building their own since they, their grandparents owned it. It's ridiculous. And they, they going to charge them five thousand, that building could, if they didn't keep it up with that five thousand dollar month rent and keep putting, adding to it, it'd fall to the foundation. There's no reason for that to be going on in this city. It is no reason for us to continue arguing, and I'm sorry, but it is a true statement, we have been arguing for a month, almost six months now, about an issue that had nothing truly to do with this council or the citizens of this Goldsboro city. It had to do between two people and two individuals and it should have been handled properly in a court of law through every step of the way. Didn't matter how it went. Ms. Carter should not be fired because she's a black woman, but if we're going to say we're going to be pro-black, we're, we're getting rid of, we're going to get rid of our own black people. Because of what reason? It's not right. We need to stand up and say, you know what, it's done. Handling the court of law, don't deal with the city of Goldsboro, point blank, period. It doesn't have to do with us, it has to do with two people and that's where it should end. We need to come together as a city and take care of our people and take care of our citizens. That's why I called Mr. Barnes and I asked him, what do you need for your summer youth program? Then he starts to tell me about the feeding program and I'm like, well, by God, we need to get you some money. We shouldn't be feeling in giving a whole park money that half of our citizens don't even go to. We should be giving you money to feed these children and staff your staff. That's just, it's ridiculous to me. And I'm, I'm to the point where I'm just like, I don't even care anymore. I just want, I just want to go back to my industry, which was animation film, and just be happy because it's, it's a sad situation with what's going on with the city of Goldsboro and that's all I have to say.
Okay, Councilmember, thank you. No comment. Roll one. Mr. Foster?
No. Oh, well, yes, I would like to thank everybody that came out and spoke again. I didn't expect the turnout, I was going to be upset if nobody came out with the same energy as last week, but we came, a lot of folks came back with the same exact energy and I appreciate it and I thank you all.
Councilmember Ham? Councilmember Ham, any comments? No comment. Councilmember, uh, Acock, any comments? No comment. No. You said no comments or your comments? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you there. Yeah, well, the only thing I do want to report is most of you know that Dylan Alumni was here and by all accounts had a really good time. I know that they wanted to, they were very appreciative to the council for helping them with their picnic and they wanted me to report back that they really did appreciate that and that they'll be looking for some more help next year. But I think they had a good turnout and good parade and all that, so I do want to thank them for all they did. And with that, we're going to have a budget hearing this Thursday and just want everybody to know that we heard what everybody said and so different members will have different takes on what was said tonight and so, but I'm sure there'll be some comments on that on Thursday.
What time is the budget meeting?
The budget meeting Thursday is at two o'clock. And with that, I thank everybody for coming and we recess tonight's council meeting to Thursday, June sixth, at two o'clock to the large conference in the City Hall edition. And by note, this required in, and the only note required is placing this on the website. Is that what we're saying? Okay, all right, thanks everybody for coming.